You need to click on it.
I've already clicked about it on my screen. Do you think it's on that one?
Sorry.
And just so everybody knows, this is just recording for, you know, to upload to YouTube. No one's linked into this meeting other than myself and Catherine. Thank you.
I, it's not showing.
Oh, your, your mouse just moved over there. So I think now you can.
Oh, there we go.
Can you just hit enter on the laptop?
All right. All right. So we were just doing some date gymnastics to find a time that might work for the governance conversation when we won't be interrupted. That can only stay till about quarter of ten this morning and then we are attending the funeral. So we're looking at Wednesday, August second. I'll be in the area, in the neighborhood. So that will work for everyone. Eric's gonna send an outlook. That's, we're gonna hope that we can find a date where we can have that conversation. And have a slot for that one. We do. So we would do like either nine to noon or ten to one. The whole will come through for nine to one, but we won't.
Except next week, there is no slot for it.
Yeah, there's no meeting.
So then I will be available the second.
Okay.
Cause I planned my trip around that.
You know, the, the governance piece, just to talk briefly about it. You know, Tom, you know, new to the board and, and Neil, there's been a lot of change. Malcolm came on mid, well, so we didn't have a governance retreat with Malcolm. We were here for a strategic planning conversation, the last governance.
Same.
And we were saying Brooks first retreat on governance was, she was remote and other people were in person. And that's, that's never ideal. It's a great in-person conversation. So we will hold the government. If you did your homework, great, you're ahead. I got a gold star for you. And I think you said you already did your homework. So you could just save that and we will use these major, those question prompts when we're here together, you know.
Don't worry. And I was complaining still. It wasn't possible.
Oh, you can't. I obviously, it would be in a much better place.
No, yeah. Apparently not. I just didn't want to disappoint.
Now he's. There's a lot of people here in August. They don't like.
Yeah. You've got us at our crankiest.
Well, it gives me something to look forward to, too, then.
Connecticut share.
So what then we'll do today is just a quick deep recap yesterday. And then we'll talk about the strategic plan and kind of thinking about October when we'll be back to have a, a strategic planning conversation. And what you all are hoping for maybe through a process in 2023, because it is, it is, it is, it can be just a reflection. It can also be a time to really take stock of where you are and, and what you want to do and things differently going forward. A lot of change. Since that first strategic plan was completed, only Dawn and Matt were on the board that, then for the first one in, in 2018. So I think we've done a good job making sure each year it's still, there's good alignment with the board and what's in the document. But we certainly want to make sure that the key things are on your mind become part of the plan. So let's start with yesterday and that was, is that the first time you've done something like that, or at least in recent memory?
Yeah.
Libby, you could.
Yeah.
A while.
Um, I don't, I don't recall it being like that. May, there's, you know, joint meetings every now and then about specific things, but not about the board strategic plan. So.
So what was, what's your, kind of what was your take on the conversation, the, you know, the, just, and what, what, what did you like about yesterday? Kind of what, what worked for you in that?
Yeah. So I think the timing was rough because there are people who serve on boards who have jobs.
So evening be here.
So I think evening would be, we'd get better, broader participation and we would need a bigger room.
Yeah.
If that's the case. Yeah. However, I do think hearing from everybody, a little bit from everybody who was present was really valuable because a spokesperson for a board does not necessarily mean we get the voices, or the disparate voices from a particular board.
Yeah.
To speak. There are those of us who speak more often than others, as evidenced yesterday.
Yeah. People who didn't speak at all.
Yep.
Some people who.
And perhaps the, the opportunity to supply written input for those who aren't comfortable speaking up in a group that large might be valuable.
Okay.
But I was pleasantly surprised at the degree of alignment.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not sure whether that's because people are uncomfortable to talk about what is misaligned um, in a, in a room.
Yeah.
Like that. So those are my.
Others.
Yeah, I think, I'm similar. I think you have to draw some of the questions out a little more than we did. I think it was interesting that they caught that we didn't put crack in environment, even though we talked about putting something in when our last go around, we didn't, cause it was being addressed well. And we said, I will leave it and we'll get it addressed. But it was interesting that the other boards caught that that should have a higher
Profile.
Profile. I thought that was interesting. I think that we didn't, there wasn't any, there was mention of constraints, but we didn't really talk about either fiscal or you know, manpower constraints that we face. There wasn't talk of how do we oh, we've got competing interests and we don't have enough resources or time to deal with it. We didn't really dive into the details of how do you pick or choose, you know? And I think that's was, you know, that's where some of the wobbling comes. And I think one thing I left with was we need better communication on specific issues throughout the year. You know, I don't think we can do it once on a general thing, cause then it's easy to say, yeah, that was in our plan.
Yeah.
But we have things that we talked about yesterday that were in the plan and we knew were gonna be problems and we haven't dealt with them for 20 years. In various plans throughout the town and they don't either rise to the top for various reasons. You know, some nefarious and some other not nefarious. It depends how you look at it. You know, some of them don't rise because we don't have the staff or the money or the time and they just kind of keep putting, get put on that burner. And so I think that somehow prioritization conversations have to be, you know, including money and, you know, that, those issues need to be, you know, more discussed at, at a certain level.
Malcolm, what'd you think?
I thought, well, the world's, there were a lot of speech making. Um, I'm one, a little more specific to what I talked, but I think we should do it again. I didn't think we got that deep.
Yeah.
I'd like to have gotten a little deeper. As I said, there are a lot of people making great brandy out of speeches and saying, yes, we, we need housing. We need to preserve the environment, but I don't think we really got down to really nitty gritty. So I somewhat agree with Matt. So I think we should do it again. But perhaps focus more on one or two things. The things we really know that are, that need to be done. Uh, so I'm, it was a start, but I, I think we could have done better.
Um, what'd you think? Brand new, two weeks on the job. You're in from your neighbors. What'd you think?
Oh, it was really good. I thought there was a lot of candor in the room from a lot of the board members and who didn't hesitate to kind of, maybe not say exactly what they thought, but a lot of what they thought. And there were some good dialogue questions. A bunch of folks asked questions to Brooke about housing and et cetera. I thought the, the conversation around quality of life was very interesting because it is such a amorphous definition in some ways and kind of refining those goals. That was really a smart conversation. And I totally agree with what, what Matt said on communication. I don't know if it's a meeting like this more, more times a year, or it's a report, or I, I don't know. But, but getting the information on what's going on to the other boards, cause, cause like we, we all don't have the time to watch every other board meeting and listen to what they're doing, but anything that kind of puts us all on a similar page is a good thing.
Yeah. On a quick follow-up on that is sometimes it's, if you have a board representative.
Yeah.
They're like, I'm having this now. Well, so-and-so is your representative. You should have known about that. And it's like, you know, you don't always get everything like it's, and so just cause as a representative doesn't mean is ever a chance. You know, cause we can only do it in front of the camera, that we can update each other. And so then, so all of a sudden, as things happen, anyway, so I can agree with that.
Well, I know this was kind of something you were hoping for. So what was your takeaway?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that we could become a little bit more productive with it if we, if we do it.
Yeah.
A little more often. I know that the person that I had talked to of it at MMA, they do it quarterly. Um, and not necessarily everybody goes, but one or two representatives from each board. Um, maybe here twice a year would be a realist, realistic. I mean, I think I would like to dig a little bit more into the areas of conflict.
Yeah.
Um, you know, where, especially within uh, so much of our, our strategic plan areas, just inherently have a conflict between getting housing stock and dealing with kind of coastal resiliency things where like the CONCOM has these regulations proposed right now. There are already massive changes to build, building certain properties that order that ones.
Yeah.
Um, and and then same thing like transportation, people get very concerned about concentrations of too much housing in one area, but yet if we want to really provide a way to get people out of the single occupancy vehicle.
Yeah.
It needs to be, it needs to be in a more concentrated area where we can provide that service. Walkability.
Free and frequent and yeah.
Yeah. It's been tough to be in the fill and and I mean, we're, we're going to have to do some more traffic mitigation measures that people are fighting to because they worry. And this was said yesterday that once we fix problems, does it invite more people and then exacerbate the problems? So I, I think we can get deeper into some of that stuff and recognize a little bit more where, where we can, you know, the key. And, you know, at, at some, the HDC might be another good organization to bring in because their design concerns are sometimes in contrast with the ability to to build a decent sized building to say, in a, in indoor recreation facility and something with apartments that has four floors of living. So, so.
Alternate energy sources on buildings and stuff. It's a big issue.
Yeah. Yeah. I was gonna ask about, you know, the mix of boards, but Brooke, you had your hand up and I, I do want to come back to that question about who else.
So I'm gonna morph into governance a little.
Okay.
I think we should seriously consider a licensing board so that we free up select board hours for joint meetings and deeper conversations about long-term and strategic planning across the community. The community's clamoring for long-term planning.
And we're not getting that.
And we're not, we don't have the time for it because we're doing utility licenses and, and liquor licenses and I mean, I know there's positives and negatives to, to offloading that regulatory authority to a licensing board, but I think we should seriously think about it to free up time on our agendas to.
Absolutely. I actually campaigned on that in a couple of my discussions that the, uh, for getting into governance, that we spend a lot of time on routine things that we don't need to, like licensing. I'd also like to see the more controversial things up front of the agenda. I mean, we, we spend a lot of time getting staff reports and overheads and countless overheads, uh, which is fine. And we say, very good staff and move on. If we would find another way to get those reports and spend our time talking about what's really important.
And joint meetings, when some, when a staff report on something comes up, invite the board for a joint meeting so that we're having a deeper conversation with staff and the other board or boards as, as they affect a certain thing that we're.
I mean, we, we talk about, you know, our Curtis's warrant. I think we need a warrant on the next available time. We have a licensing commission. I would support that. I don't know about the rest of the board. Then we could really talk about important things.
Now, was there a time? Um, I think it was when Michael Vlachy was on the board, where they, they would have small or where they would have smaller meetings where it was just three, three people would come and get to spend time through that routine stuff.
Um, no.
I, it's what told me.
Well, I think it may, may have been an idea, but off and on over the years, the board has tried a monthly workshop. Pick a topic, that's the item and you spend a couple of hours working on, you know, talking about it with whoever you want. Um, in the Michael Vlachy days, he laid out an agenda that was quite specific. So I'm, I, I don't remember the exact detail, but just like the first Wednesday of the month was citizen and departmental. The second Wednesday of the month was strategic items. The third Wednesday was public hearings. The fourth was, you know, regular business county, all real estate, that, that sort of thing. It was quite specific and he did not deviate from that. Right, right now, there's a lot of deviation. Well, so-and-so is available, let's do this. Oh, licensing, schedule a public hearing without telling us. So now we have to do it on this day. We, we could get stricter on those things. Um, the licensing board has been discussed as well, uh, sort of off and on, but not, you know, the, the board hasn't voted on it. So if that is a vote or directive from the board uh, to look into, we can certainly do that. It's gonna take some effort. So something else is gonna have to drop out. Um, or, you know, get less of a reprioritized in some fashion. But Dawn, I think there was some discussion about could there be re-designated board members who would hold the public hearings for the licensing? Um, but I, I don't think it ever took off.
Why, why would this take, you said a long time to do this? Why?
I didn't hear her say a long time. She just said it would take time.
It's gonna take some research to figure out how to set up a licensing board. You don't, you can't just set it up. Like what is their authority? Is it appointed by the board? Is there a charter change? Is there legislation that you would adopt in order to give that board the authority to approve licenses? Right now, Mass General Law says the local licensing authority is the select board. It's not another board. So the, the select board would probably, um, have to, well, it might be, because I don't think you, you can't transfer your authority to somebody by just a vote of the board. In the interim, you could do what, what happened with the Board of Health. There was an advisory group prior to the actual separate Board of Health being established, which made recommendations to the board on all item, Board of Health items. So I'm making this up right now, but, um, the, the licensing items, this, I'm gonna just call it for now, the Licensing Advisory Board could um, make it all of its recommendations. And you're a rubber stamp when it comes to the public hearing, but you still have to have the public hearing before the board. Unless or until there's either a charter change or some kind of a legal change in the way that is governed. So, so I'm just saying we have to explore which.
It's a great example, though, of something that sounds kind of simple. Let's do this. And it would be easy to say, yeah, let's do it. And, but there are, there are so many steps that you have to go through to actually make it so.
And then you said, you have to say, is it gonna really help? Is it really, is it gonna get us to the root of the problem? I don't think the root of the problem is we spend time on licensing. I think the root of the problem is that we don't spend time on some of the big issues. So even if we, you know, and we're not supported, you know, properly, you know, for all different reasons on some of the really big ones. And I think some answers, like what Don was talking about with housing, et cetera, some of the answers are right here. You know, we have a dense downtown. We have row houses. We have four, we had four-story, we have four-story buildings. We have four-story buildings. And we have a comprehensive plan that says, don't build in the hinterlands and next to the water and build in the mid-island and build in the high ground. But we are slowly not following that because we're building suburbia. And so I think those, we have to kind of, how do we get around to doing that? And it, it's almost like we think it's someone else's job, you know, and, and I think, so anyhow, that's the.
Well, that's often, or they will certainly be important in terms of those types of issues, right?
They are, but we've, you know, the comp, the, the comp plan is different than the master plan and they've both been around for twenty, thirty years. And they've, they've, a lot of things we're still complaining about. We're, we're in those. So really it's almost, some of it is a matter of execution. And, and, and that's a matter of having public hearings and getting public buy-in. Everyone's so busy, they don't do it. So, you know, anyway.
Well, and I also think that sometimes when, when, when we, when it's, it's been agreed upon by a board, say that the priority is development in the areas that have infrastructure, transportation, et cetera, that, that the why of that is, is, is not communicated, because I can't tell you how often I hear, we need to build affordable housing in Pulpus. And I'm like, it's not going to happen because there's no infrastructure, the cost alone to develop, if you have to build a septic system for affordable housing makes it cost prohibitive and people don't understand, then you're adding traffic. You know, and so, so to some extent, it's communication and, and it's also just sticking to a decision and, and saying it over and over and over again, when people try to push out of a policy, push us away from a policy decision that's really been agreed upon, you know?
Well, let's get back then. It sounds like, I mean, this is a, a, a great possibility for having your meetings more equal, more productive. But what about, um, these meetings with other boards? I'm curious about the mix of boards. So, um, you already mentioned the HDC. Um, some boards were, there were people there who were clearly on multiple boards, um, but as Malcolm pointed out, you know, Board of Health wasn't invited. So are there other boards that you all would want to have at such a meeting?
HDC.
HDC.
I think it depends on the topic. Then.
Okay.
Yeah, we're meeting on.
It's on a broad one, like the strategic plan? Or?
And again, I think that's too broad.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. We, that's why we can't get to somewhere. I think we need to, if it's housing, then we bring in so-and-so and so-and-so. And then you bring in so-and-so and so-and-so and hopefully you get somewhere.
So more specific.
We do, we do five meetings a year, whatever, with each of those topics. Or something like that. It's really, really get down to it.
Pick who should attend based on the topic.
And, and just to get on track, I, I'm gonna start doing research about licensing. Or it's. I want to hear Libby.
I was just gonna say, I, I don't disagree with you, Matt, about the, it's too broad, but I do think that all the big boards need to know what the select board strategic plan is. So I think there needs to be a broad meeting. Maybe it's only an hour um, or an hour and a half, something like that. And it's in a bigger room and they, they, they all are invited or they can send their rep or whatever and their staff person needs to be there. And then throughout the year, there's a select board workshop, perhaps, or, or however you all want to do it, but it's a scheduled. Um, I'm gonna make this up right now, but HDC, we want to talk to you about these design issues. We need affordable housing and we want higher apartments and we want solar on roofs. What, what are you doing to, um, to further those things? They're in our strategic plan. Do you need help? Do you need consultants? Do you need money? Do you need legislative assistance? Whenever.
Yeah. Another way to do that is to show them the old pictures and say, this is what we'd like to do. And we'd like you to, you know, here's, here's what we'd like to do. Here's the support we need.
Yep.
You know, how can we do this? You know, can you see them doing this? You know, here's what the old ends used to look like. Here's how big they were. This is what downtown used to be four stories.
Yep. What would it take to do this? Does it? Yeah.
We kind of need to give the examples and give the answer, cause if we just go into shoot the breeze, you're gonna end up shooting the breeze again.
Yes.
We have the proposal need to say, this is what we're doing and we're not building in the wetlands. I'm sorry, you have, you know, a lot next to Myakama Pond, but that would be dumb. We shouldn't be doing that anymore. You know, here's what we're gonna do. You know, we know you'd get more value, but we can't do that. Cause then we're gonna be dealing with these issues forever.
So Matt, just not to go on about that, but like, let's just take that as a tiny little example. We don't want to build a house next to Myakama Pond. I'm completely making this up right now.
Yeah, me too.
Um, but, but pretend it's within the buffer. It, it's outside of the buffer and I, I forget what it is. It's fifty yards, fifty feet, whatever, hundred feet. It's, it's outside of, it's like a hundred and one feet or something close. That is probably maybe why the CONCOM is looking at adopting these, um, more stringent regulations. But what are the impacts of those regulations going to be? Have they looked at it? Do we know? Is there a way to figure it out?
Map look like.
What's the map look like?
Just this, but if it's stronger.
I'm trying to get um, the departments, when they are putting forward recommending, um, regulations or their boards to really get it deeper into them. Is there, are there going to be more staffing requirements for this? Are there financial implications? What is the outreach going to be? Are we sufficiently staffed to do enforcement? Um, those types of things. And we're, it is not a hundred percent there, but hopefully it's getting closer to being something that is uh, a kind of needed criteria or a checklist when we're adopting regulations that has all those things in it. Let's see your outreach plan. What is this? Who's gonna do this staffing for this? Is there a map that needs to be updated?
And some of it is, is, some of this is the work that should be done. So use for an example, we, that someone's bringing tertiary dwellings or, or fourth dwellings or whatever. There should be a look at it from a, you know, from a bunch of different lenses. And, and though, and that a lot of times doesn't happen. Everyone else, everyone thinks it's a select board's job or it's planning's job or it's whoever's job. And it doesn't really happen. And then what, the vote is in, at the finance committee and the town is based on who gives a better argument.
Yeah.
And it, but we're not really thinking about, geez, we're putting a fourth dwelling in all these places that really shouldn't have had two or three to begin with. And we're gonna have all these issues. We're gonna have flooded basements and we're gonna have, you know, all of the other things. We're gonna have more hardscape and stuff running into the harbor, running into the pond. Is that what we really want to be doing? And so that has to be analyzed and it gets to town meeting. Oh, well, it was the will of the voters, but it was uninformed will. It was, you know, had, we hadn't thought it through and I, and that's what I try to, I struggle with sometimes.
Yeah.
There was a couple zoning changes around Hubert Pond at the last meeting. It kind of slipped through. Just, it was, it's unacceptable.
Yeah.
So, um, putting this out there, so we, one meeting with the big boards, what would we say? And what are those boards? On the strategic plan to, with the purpose of informing here as the, you know, the executive board of the town. This is what the select board is saying is important to them. To a certain degree, you're, you're wanting alignment from your boards and committees to actual event. Um, so knowing who that would be, but then, you know, hearing other, you know, it could be by topic. It could be by board. We want to meet with the HDC on this topic. We want to meet with boards that are involved with affordable housing. So kind of part of what I want you to think about is what's your all, your all's appetite? Like if you, if you set up a calendar for this, what do you feel like you have the capacity to do? Going from not having done it in recent history to ten meetings or even six might really feel like a lot to you. So, um, especially if you can't get rid of the licensing or, you know, other, if you're not freeing up space in other ways. So what do you feel like you could do? And somebody, Dawn, you mentioned, maybe we could do something like this twice a year. Um, and then others said, maybe we need more conversations deeper. So I'm interested to hear kind of what you feel like you really have the capacity to do today, given how you operate.
I mean, if it's being driven by the strategic plan, one possibility is one umbrella about the whole thing, right? Make sure Board of Health is included in that. And then take them topic by topic.
Okay.
But that's, you know, that's six meetings a year. It's all, feels like a lot.
It is a lot.
But could we do it in two hours?
Right.
Topic by topic instead of five hours, right?
Yeah.
And actually be able to dig deeper in two hours on the topic with smaller number of boards present for the, that are related. I mean, that would be sort of a place, I mean, my, my, when I started with the licensing board, my thought was free up time in the select board.
Right.
So we could have almost a meeting a month. That strategic plan.
On each topic.
Um, topics. And so that could be, you know, these five.
Yeah.
And then even smaller topic ones throughout the year, if we did, you know, a monthly meeting that was strategic in nature.
And that's kind of sounds like some, a pattern that worked under a certain uh, board that there, there was that kind of rigor. This is that means all we can do. So that's a possibility of, of just making a change maybe come the fall. That, that's something that you might try.
I talked, I tried to get something similar to NPDDC for the master plan. I was trying to get it broken down by topics and do a different one a month than we ever quite got around to it. But I think, cause somehow we have to mesh. I, I look at this and we have to mesh, you know, we have to mesh MPTC with us. And everyone needs to be on the same page somehow. So I, you know, in ideal world, is there any way we could get?
You know, we have to mesh M P D C with us and everyone needs to be on the same page somehow. So I, you know, in ideal world, is there any way we could get? You know, get those you get. I don't know how to do it.
Nine areas in there in the plan. So that would be if you did one on each item.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, I mean, I'm not even talking about the the details of it. I'm talking about, you know, we sort of got to buy from the government with one part of the government, you know, is doing one thing and, you know, and not the other side of the government may be doing something else. And and so how do we bring, what we have to really do is bring various parts of the government together. That's what I've been talking about for years.
Yeah.
And it is it is a lot of people get their backs up. That's not our job. You can't tell us and all you saw a little of it yesterday. And that that's kind of the, how do we with help? How do we bridge that?
It's a separate government.
Yeah.
In itself, and we need to address that.
Yeah, but and I think it's normalizing collaboration, making it more ongoing.
Yeah.
Rather than an annual thing. Um.
Maybe that can be done around one like how ground, maybe that can be done around that was a topic where it's them and it's the H D C and it's a member through from here. I I don't know.
But even the World Housing Task Force and how they manage. I mean, think about who are the key players in the community that are working alongside.
Already meeting every.
They're already meeting.
Yeah.
So inviting them. And and I think to me, not doing it as separate workshops that no one watches, but doing it as part of our Wednesday meetings so that people see us doing the work of long term planning on a Wednesday night on a consistent basis. I think it will build more confidence in us as the the leadership of the community in terms of where are we going as an island and what does our future look like? I think that's the thing I'm hearing. Who's deciding what Nantucket looks like in thirty years?
You know, it what we what we could do is especially since we have a little bit of time before your governance conversation is we could actually plan to have a um proposal of what your of the calendar for maybe, you know, the next nine months. So if we do this in August, so what is the September to May schedule look like? Strategic conversations you all want to have? How do we fit the strategic plan into that, especially since we'll be reassessing that. And and look at, you know, like you said, this will be the Wednesday for strategic conversations. You're the ones we're interested in having and trying to develop. That makes sense to just kind of come back to you with a proposal. I can, you know, let me support.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay. Um, it it then then let's let's talk about the strategic plan a little bit, just kind of, you know, where are we? So um Catherine Carter and um another colleague, Emily, also, we were here in May. And we had um some really good conversations with the staff and obviously Janet, like those same as at all of these meetings also um around where things are with the strategic plan. And it was pretty impressive to us just kind of from the outside check in of how much has been operationalized. One of the things that's clearly happened as well is that people have gone back to their um
Corners.
Corners. Like I love what you said, normalizing collaboration. I mean, there was there was a time when each of the teams met uh cross discipline across the town and and there was great conversations that happened. And now it's much more I'm doing this and someone else must be doing that because I'm not that that type of thing. So that's that's about execution, but what what we found was you all have gotten a lot done. Like there's there's really no no question about that. But as fast as people are getting things done, the issues keep getting more complex. I mean, it is is dramatic how much more complex the issues are today, even when they when they were five years ago. I mean, you know, our first introduction to the town was looking at staffing. And the staffing situation now is no one can predict it, I think, where that you would be here five years ago. I do. You did.
I did.
You did.
Yeah, in Germany, twenty years ago.
Twenty years, you've been saying that.
Yeah, saying that without housing, if we don't house, we bought, we largely bought uh
Yeah.
The Fairgrounds Road for for housing. You know, so 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 some of this stuff has been, but here this is, yeah, but here's what I think has to happen. Do do people know what a Cassandra is? Cassandra effect, it's somebody who's complaining about this. You know, because someone who's who's a whistleblower is saying, who sees something and is feels really strong about it and everybody else is saying is saying, no, that's not how we do things. You're crazy. And then eventually that person ends up not being sort of chicken little too. Cassandra is like a Greek. No, but but I so then but that's one of the things I think is important here is when someone has a really strongly felt belief and they keep pushing it, we have to dig underneath and see if there's a truth. Because some of the there is and we and I think it's easier just not to deal with it.
Well, and I and what I was saying, I I appreciate that that perspective on staffing and and the housing complexity of it. I think what what I what I've seen in this course, you know, we did the staffing study before the strategic plan. But the number of positions F T Es that have been added to address strategic issues in the strategic plan, you all have invested a significant amount of money in terms of building organizational capacity. And it's still
Not enough.
Still not enough, right? So because there's all these other things that are happening. You believe it takes three people to find a house for a year, so. So um you all, the the five of you as the as the board will have an opportunity in October to write a new strategic plan. And much of what you're doing will probably continue to be relevant, at least based on the conversations yesterday. Housing is still gonna be an issue. Transportation is still gonna be an issue. Quality of life is important. That's the outcome everybody's looking for. The environment here, you know, like what you said yesterday, you're an island, you gotta take care of everything. And and was it Seth who he said, yeah, but you're uniquely positioned to actually address your own problems without blaming it on, you know, the rear, you know, runoff, we're dealing with in Boston, so. Um, and I'm missing one area as I was off the top of my head, but you know, those are kind of the 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 framework of your plan. From a content and from a process perspective, have you all given any thought to what what you want to do if you want to do anything differently this fall when you come up with a plan? And I say that and then I realize some of you might not know what that process looked like to begin with. Um, and I and I think the strategic plan here really evolved, you two maybe remember this now really in Greg the the best, but it really evolved over two years of strategic planning. It was like the first one, we came up with four outcome areas, efficient town of government operations. That wasn't in the first iteration of the plan.
There's three, the beginning.
Yeah, and there wasn't the, yeah, and there wasn't the overall uh R two overarching sustainability, the framework of sustainability.
Quality of life and efficient town operations are added the second.
Added second year. So we went from three to five. It was all done, um, you know, in the kind of retreat setting and you can get it at part of the farms and 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 it was good in good conversations that got you where where you are right now. Um, there wasn't a a ton of, there wasn't board committee um input. There wasn't community input. Um, it's really been how the board has focused on pushing the town forward. So thoughts about what your hopes are for this update um when we come back in October? Yeah, Tom.
I want to be completely backwards looking, but I'm thinking there's a bunch of stuff in here that possibly we could provide an update for to the community on some successes. Like Brooke, you talked yesterday about housing and the attainable to two forty A M I. Right? There's so many updates in housing and you and Tucker did that thing in August, right? Which a lot of people look and Tucker created that document on what was done with um some of the money that was appropriated and presented to FinCom that went around before town meeting to a lot of folks. I think that that assuage a lot of people said, oh, that's what that was spent on. Um, so I don't I don't know if we could if if we should prepare a document or talk about it at a meeting, but just sort of an update on on where we're where we've been with some of the or where the board, where the town has been with some of this stuff, because I think there are a bunch, a handful of successes in here.
Some victories.
Yeah.
Well, we actually worked on it. Yeah, we are. You you might remember we did a state of the town a year ago, December uh twenty twenty one. And this year, the decision was made to hold off and do a big strategic planning now focus of here are the successes. So.
Yeah, we've um gone through the prior updates and pulled out uh what's been operationalized. And what some of the successes are, we've got a draft for brochure and we're identifying some photographs now so that it's punchy. Um, because we don't think that it will get read deeply, but just to be able to say, look, come see what I've done kind of document. And we should have adapted that in mid July.
Yeah.
With a target for publication in September, but we've started cracking on that since um the last meeting that we all had together.
March.
Yeah.
When I when I think about housing, right, you know, I talked yesterday about everything that we've done. Once it's done, it it's in the rearview mirror for people. Honestly, they just want to know what are you doing next?
Mm hmm.
And so I think it's a combination of declaring what's been done and then what's the roadmap for for what we have, what we're focusing on next in in some detail. And I think housing is a good example of that, right? Okay, so you have six and a half million dollars in your, what are you gonna do with it?
Where's your budget? Where's your project?
And how are you gonna help?
Who's gonna?
My family member. How are you gonna help? You know, the the teachers, how are you gonna help? Um, and and generally, there's not a good understanding of the complexities, things like what we talked about about unions and you know, the the things that get in the way of solving the problem. I don't um you know, communicating complex issues. I love, I want to have you come to meetings and do this because um communicating, we struggle in the housing world to communicate these super complex issues. Um. And people come with great concepts to me all the time and I find myself saying, but good idea, but here's the reality of how you operationalize something like that and what can get in the way of it within the context of government.
Yeah, or it hasn't been washed out enough. Once you understand something, you can, you know, then you can explain it simply. But it but if you don't really know how you're gonna spend the money or how many houses or what who's gonna do it and what the ramp out is gonna be or how you're gonna determine whether it's teachers or town employees or whoever. If you don't understand any of that, you can't answer the questions. Once you know, then you can say A, B, and C.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's and that what I would sort of say along lines changing slightly is it's how do we get uh synthesized this? How do we how do we prioritize? I think that's part of, you know, part that's sort of part of Libby's struggles. And one of the, I'm working with a group like a good job institute and they're saying, here's what a good job is. It pays a little more and it gives people ability to work the job, et cetera. But one of the biggest things is there's slack in it. So you're not burned out. You're not at the end of your rope every, you know, every week, every day. And I and I so how do you like the town? You know, and it seems crazy to say a goal should be building slack into the the job. But at this point, we'd like to just be hired, you know, fully hired. But at some point, fully hired isn't really even where you need to be if you're gonna actually have enough headspace to do these big issues.
Right.
You know, and that and I think that's what kind of sort of hit me going through with my own business and going through it with talking to other people is that you have to sort of shift how we even think about it. And, you know, so if you have enough people, you know, have more than enough people, then all of a sudden you've you've got someone to do the you know, write for grants and you have time to sit and, you know, and meet with the planning department and get, you know, sort of how do we, how do we institutionalize some of this? How do we operationalize this? But right now, I don't see how we do that. So so since we can't, how do we focus and get a few things done really well, rather than have a bunch of things that you know, and we do and and how do we make sure we do the things we wanted, what we need to do, not the things that any one individual wants to do? Like, that's what I would like to spend a little more time on.
And there's intersection with private sector interests too.
Yeah, yeah.
Like the housing summit that Housing Nantucket did was great because it brought municipal people with private developers and, you know, a lot of interest groups. And I think that's um you know, and and set some priorities.
What else? When you think about the process this year and what you hope to get done with your strategic plan, what do you think about? I'm at.
Yeah, you in August. Kind of led you into that. I think I was thinking what I was thinking. Thanks, guys.
All right. I'm out. Second.
All right, we'll be here.
All right.
Oh.
Well, in the creek shall rise.
Julia, your question again?
What are you? What are you? You know, we're gonna walk into a meeting in October to talk about strategic planning. But it's really about what's next. You know, how much of a refresh is this? Is there any other data you need besides the, you know, understanding yourselves and also the community, what's been done? You know, what information do you need or what resources are you looking for to develop the next iteration of the plan? Because there are things that could change.
From the data side?
Mm hmm.
The data analytics on housing hopefully will be well underway by then. Certainly more information about ridership on the Nerdah and the and the cost per rider so we can evaluate, you know, year round service versus point to point in the off season. Does that save us money? Um, and are there you know, financial resources that we can bring to bear from off island grants, et cetera? And I I do think grant writing um is gonna be a really important um need going forward, particularly around coastal resilience. And, you know, we're literally the leading edge of that and um as we kind of have been in some ways in housing too in the Commonwealth. So taking advantage of our geography to secure funding and everybody's nose to the grindstone trying to execute the work day to day that time to look for the funding to pay for things outside of what we can generate locally.
Can I mention something about grant? I heard it yesterday too. We need a grant writer. I that sounds good. Let's get this grant writer on board and we'll get all kinds of grants. It it's not that simple. There, a lot of these grants are very specialized. There's, um, I forget what S N E P stands for, but there's um like there's Army Corps grants, there's Mass D P grants, and they all require a different kind of application, a different scope, different in kind um contributions, things like that. We often hire someone to write a grant for us. And it's a lot easier. They're specialized at doing it. They're skilled at getting them. But the other thing is, once you get the grant, who is going to manage the project, this new project we now have that the grant is going to fund? There are always strings to the grant. There's reports, there's um outcomes, there are financial um contributions, things like that. So we need to go into it eyes wide open and make sure that the resources are there to follow through on the grant. So far, Vince has been Vincent Jeff are probably the more successful departments who have applied for and secured some grants. But it really becomes a a challenge to comply with the grant requirements. We need to make sure that there are staff resources pre dedicated to to dealing with it. So I'm not saying that that's impossible or anything like that. And there is currently a lot of money out there for grants. It's also very competitive. Um, and Nantucket maybe has a bit of a leg up in our region anyway because of our nature. Um, but it it's gotta be something we need and should be doing and have the resources to manage.
And they generally fund new things, not current operations.
Right. Right. So just I can give you a little bit of a tiny little example. And there's people out there, members of the public who who don't really care about any of what I just said. They just want us to get a grant to solve their problem. So there's a a some individuals on in the Baxter Road area who've been pushing the town to apply for an Army Corps grant. Um, and they've been contacting our state rep about it. Why can't we do this? Why can't we get this? Vince and I spoke with the administrator of this grant program a couple of weeks ago. And he, we described the project and he said, that is not a project for this grant as it currently stands. You have to have, you have to be much farther along in your process. You have to have a route, you have to have bid specs. We don't have any of that yet. Yet there are, I'm gonna say connected people in the Baxter Road area who keep going to Dylan and others to say, you know, the town has to do this, just get it in. And so it can so it can languish there and then they'll they'll pick it up and we'll, you know, help politically get it. Uh, we just don't have the capacity for that. We we just don't. And it's not a grant that is going to pay for a thirty million dollar or that's on the low end. that's on the low end, project to relocate Baxter Road. It, it might give us a couple million dollars.
We should ask them to write the grant.
We should ask them to write the grant, but we still have to manage it and apply for it and figure out what the in-kind contributions are going to be, um, but I don't disagree with you on getting somebody else to, to do it. When it comes right down to stuff like that, they, these people tend to, um, sort of either disappear or say, well, that's not really what I was.
There's almost like there's the grant writing, like you said, that can be very technical and specific. And then it sounds, you know, there's this like, well, isn't there just a lot of money out there that we can apply to? You know, should we have someone who just goes and finds the grants and then we can hire someone to write them?
Yeah.
What's the, the fruit of that possibility?
I agree completely as someone whose career involved a lot of getting money, uh, if you don't know the field, you can't write the grant.
Right.
Period.
And, and there are firms that that you can hire, but we have to do an analysis of whether it, because you can, you can pay someone to apply for a grant and get zero dollars. And then you've invested ten, you know, with thousands of dollars in an application, it's a
And, and we have done that.
Terms are, you're right, really careful.
Yeah.
Well, say they can do it, but the grant often doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah. And the grant writing consultants, firms, specialists know what to say, who to contact, how to make your project attractive to the grantor. We don't always know that.
We looked at it for a nonprofit, the board I'm on, and we, we, we asked for, we asked for a grant to pay for the grant writing service and were declined. Probably for all the reasons we're talking about here. It's, it is not, it, it's not a good investment because the odds are not great. So anyway, I retract, but I, I just
Conversation is really important.
Yeah.
Be, because it's part of the background, I'll just call it noise, that I think that it, that consumes time, or like Libby was saying, like, somebody is talking to someone who's connected that talks to you, that now we need to go and do this, but there's this whole conversation, and I think one of the things you all can do is run that interference, right, and try to make sure people are directed to be constructive with their, with that type of energy, um, as opposed to having to take time from the staff to respond to well, this is why, and then they sound like they just don't wanna do it.
Right, that, that's, that's exactly what happens, and, and somebody gets a board member's ear, or Dylan's ear, or somebody like that, and now, now I'm being you know, oh, why can't we do this? Can we do, can you just, you know, can you just do it? And, uh, uh, you know, I'm just gonna say this, unless it's coming from the board, not an individual of the board, the board, do this or do that, I'm not doing it.
Um, but an example of this is I had a bunch of community members, uh, reaching out to me about uh, rental subsidies or rental incentives to, to shift short-term rentals to year-round rentals. We talked about this at, at our strategic planning meeting last fall, and, you know, the, the trust formed a small work group, we started looking at it, and quickly we learned the complexities of it were not worth the investment of time relative to other priorities, right, in the housing universe. And so I went to these community members and I said, be our legs, go do the research and bring a proposal to us. And there were a couple of different groups, and it turns out, we're gonna get a proposal from a, from a community group on this, they found a vendor, they, they're gonna bring a proposal, and now, obviously, the funding piece was always
Yeah.
Part of it too, where's the money gonna come from? And so, in, within the next month or so, a community group is gonna bring a proposal. Now, either they do it because they think it's a priority, or they, or they disappear, but if they come back and bring it up again without having done anything, I'm like, it's, you know, we have to set our priorities, and I think the trust does that, and I think we do too as a board, that sometimes the noise, we have to, we have to say that's, that has not risen to the level of us investing our time right now.
That would be really powerful for you all to be able to, in a position to say that to folks, that you know, it's kind of, we've said yes to these things, and that's what we're focusing on, we're gonna stay focused on that.
But in terms of other money, when I look at coastal resilience, we, you know, we've done it, people say to me, why, there's all this money for housing? Why aren't we getting money for housing? I'm like, twelve million dollars of Lytech financing for Tacoma Green. We did it, right? It's, we did, and you don't get to go back to the ATM every time you want money for housing, you get put back on the list, because there's, this is competitive. So, um, but with coastal resilience, the numbers are so huge, we will not be able to fund it as a community, so that's
Yeah, and we really don't know what we need to do.
Right.
Correctly.
And there is not, um, what is the number, four hundred and fifty billion, million dollars out there for Nantucket projects?
Right.
There's, there's, there's not, li- little projects, there's probably money for, but not, not several million.
Right.
Okay.
At, at MMA on Friday, the Chair of the Massachusetts Selectmen, this who's, who's a board member in one of the towns, he said, he, he started with this talk, and he said, your mo- all of your most powerful word is no, learn to use it.
Wow.
So.
You have to learn how to say no, though.
Yeah.
Then you're, you don't care. That's the trick.
Well, a- and I think a definitive no versus a kick the can down the road, or, or a certainly, definitely not now. You know?
See, I like, you're asking a, a proposal from a group who asks you to do something and they agree to do it. I think we can do more of that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of talent on this island.
Oh, no, I just wanted to say, uh, that, one of the things I find so incredibly frustrating, particularly with the coastal resiliency part is, we had an opportunity to collaborate with all of the owners on Baxter Road, to try and come up with something where they would fund that. And buy it basically, I mean, at this point, I don't even know, I think the whole thing is dead, and we're going to have to come up with millions of dollars to fix all the infrastructure, um, somehow. We, we need to promote in some way, um, the ability to have these public-private partnerships. And I, I, I just don't see a path forward other than this. And, and I mean, Nantucket is really good at raising money and running water events.
Well, and doing it collaboratively as opposed to imposing it, because you impose, people sue.
Right, right.
But if you bring them along and, and, and encourage them to invest in their own best interest.
You said you needed to normalize collaboration.
Yeah.
Like that. What, what are y'all, so are you thinking about for October? What do you, we, we open this up? What are you looking for? Feel like anything has been missing in the plan, not a tactic or strategy, but just from a broad um, outcome perspective.
I don't think we wanna add anything. Because we, we have enough troubles getting through those, what we plan. Quality of life needs a little beefing up. Word in.
Clarity.
I mean, there's just, I know there's a lot of disagreement on what quality of thing.
That's what I mean.
And I, I'm not sure how to solve that, really.
I'm not sure how to solve it either, but
For some people, it would be like, let's dial it back to nineteen seventy-five, where five thousand people live on
That sounds great.
Over all those like fabulous restaurants we have that are open year-round now, I mean.
Think we have to define the wording in that more, and otherwise, I've been through a lot of strategic plans in my life, and actually, this is pretty good. It's really, uh, it's focused, it has clear measures, and people are actually doing something with it. I've seen many strategic plans that are beautifully put together, and they end up on the shelf or in the closet or in the filing cabinet, so I'm actually quite impressed with this.
Are we, um, are we giving the board, what, what's the status of our report about?
What's that memo that we gave you?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, there's, there's no reason, you certainly could, they don't have it. We talked about, so, you know, it's not a secret, when we did this kind of, what, whether the needs assessment, I mean, we have, there's, it's done, and there's you know, Libby has a memo, I did not actually think it would be helpful for you to have it yesterday or today, like, it wasn't context that you needed. I, I do think it's gonna be helpful to Libby, it's my hope anyways, at budget time, because as people talked about the additional resources that they feel like they need in order to implement where they are in the strategic plan, we were able to kind of say, yeah, this, this kind of makes sense, like, the position in the housing office is an example of that. But I'm not really sure if it's the time to add the position in the DEI office and let Kimong get a little further with his strategic plan before you start adding a second position. I mean, and so we were able to have those kinds of, of conversations and, and screen out, so that's, it's available. Um, I, I have no reason why you couldn't share it with the board at all, it's perfectly fine to. Um, I just don't know how helpful it will actually be to you all, because it is very granular, I mean, it's at that activity level. As opposed to you all working at that goal level and working on the success statement, it's like, like, same, like, there's nothing wrong with giving it to you.
Yeah, so to me, I think it would be helpful for us to understand when Libby says, what am I not doing in order to do this other thing?
Yes.
It, it, I think
Validate that.
Us understanding what the trade-offs are in terms of staff capacity, funding capacity, but also, so I can talk to the community about that, because I think we say it all the time, and Libby says it all the time at town meeting, is, you know, that, that, yeah, it'd be great if we could do that, but who's gonna do it, and what, what are they gonna not do in order to get that thing done, right? And I really understand that conceptually, but I wanna see this, because I think it's, it's helpful to see exactly where everybody's spending their time, because I don't think they're sitting around eating man-mans.
No, and, and the, you know, the, the piece about, you know, the resources that have been, have been added, like, on the one hand, that's a really great thing, that you've added resources to address priorities. I would say objectively, there's also been at least four, maybe five high-level policy energized positions that report to Libby today that did not exist five years ago. And that is time, i- i- it is time, it is brain space, yes, it is a resource, but you know, if, if Libby did a, we could sit with Julie and have Libby talk about how her role has changed in thirty-five years, it would be a pretty dynamic conversation. But there are positions that you have, there are conversations she's involved in, and you, I don't know if you remember some of the governance stuff from, from last year, but we talked about how the town can't solve the problem anymore. It's not about just going and doing it, you still have to do all the things you do, and you have to work with these partner agencies, you have to collaborate, you have to find out the money, you need to fight legislation in order to achieve what the community really needs, so it's a different way of working that is not the same job, even when the job became town manager, which has been twenty years?
Two thousand seven.
Okay, so almost twenty years, sixteen years, the job, it, it's like night and day difference. And so I think that piece of understanding actually might really be helpful, because it's not, you know, it's, yes, you've added resources, and the conversations are so much more complex.
Well, I mean, in housing, I look at we've accomplished a lot.
Yeah.
And the reas- the human resources that's gonna take to take us from here to where we need to be, you know, in, and, and it's probably not a permanent. It, it's gotta be a bigger department while we create the units, and then it's gonna be reimagined. What is the management of a supply, inadequate supply of year-round housing look like from an enforcement and an oversight from the municipality, when, when, and where we're maintaining rather than creating, right, someday, you know? So.
Which means we don't wanna be landlords.
We, we don't, and that's where the public-private partnership comes in, is which is why we're doing, we're doing development the way we're doing it, which is, we're supplying the land and having other entities own and manage the units, because then it's not a municipality, and it's not, because we look at you know, the housing authority properties, they can't be maintained because of the munis- the governance structure of procuring workers to shingle properties, right? So there's reasons why we do the, the, you know, but there will always be an oversight of deed restrictions that has to sit with the municipality, that even, even if Housing Nantucket is holding the deed restriction, there's a level of oversight of that that, that will always sit, because our money has been put into it. And we should be looking at it.
Yeah.
And that's just one little piece.
Can I toss out one observation?
Yeah, please.
Uh, I, I thought it was smart yesterday when somebody noted that the environmental leadership was really staff-focused. And I remember the development and creation of that, it was about the dump because we were coming up on the contract renewal. And then water quality came in, sort of in a side slip. And we've been addressing those, and they're operationalized, or in fact, the dump discussions were happening, or solid waste discussions were happening even before the strategic point income, but I think that's an opportunity to really be thinking about how we shape that to address some of the things that are coming up across departments now, they came up a lot yesterday that address sustainability and all that stuff. So I see that one as one that needs some filling out.
Yeah.
Strategically.
And more collaborative.
I second that, I agree.
I thought the exercise you did last time, on that law. Prioritizing, you deprioritize some things, prioritize others.
Yeah.
Was super useful, and I think from, from the town admin side, it allows us then to go away and say, well, how do we staff so much? If that's on the board, let's say you add that to the board, you want to, to the priorities, we want a pieced-up housing office. When Libby can go away and figure out what that means, how we best do it, how many staff it's gonna take, and we can come back, like, looking at staffing before understanding what the priorities are is kind of a, probably less, yeah. I was gonna say fool's errand, but a little, less effective way about going about it, but I really did think that was really good. And that whole notion of, if you add something, take something away, please, this
Yeah.
We're already over best.
And, and I, that's a, that is good to, to remember. Uh, when, part of me wants to also be stepping back, and I'm not hearing anything that's making a thing that's gonna fundamentally change, but I wanna make sure that this board is, those five things are the five things, because it's possible that there's something else. And, you know, even if we, like, you know, Malcolm said, and I think he said it yesterday too, quality of life, it needs beefed up, it needs more importance. There's not a lot of stuff under quality of life right now, it is, you know, housing has, has been the mainstay. Um, coastal resiliency takes up a lot of time. We put on the dump because we needed to do, you know, those kinds of things. Well, what is it about quality of life that you all would want to even imagine working on, and those things don't exist right now, that, that content to either prioritize or deprioritize isn't there.
You just move it all into a housing transportation environment, there's your quality of life.
Yeah, it's, it's almost like an umbrella on everything else, you know, in a way.
Well, if you add, you add an indoor, I'll let it, do that here, and that's then you're gonna have to find what we're not doing, yeah, that's.
But I would, I would say, yes, i- if you put those four together, you get quality of life. Yes, quality of life could be your overarching area, just like sustainability has been your overarching area. I think what quality of life has done for you that wasn't happening when it was just the original three areas was it created space to talk about recreation, and for the last couple of years, it's been outdoor and re-establishing positions and working on, you know, improving the ballfield maintenance that you do now. Um, I don't think town meeting approved the additional, some capital this year.
Town meeting didn't, but the election did, and so we're gonna talk about putting it back.
Okay, so, you know, that's, that is, I think, an outcome of you all prioritizing quality of life in your strategic plan. Okay, so, you know, that's, that is, I think, an outcome of you all prioritizing quality of life in your strategic plan. Because that would not, that direction would not have existed absent that outcome area, I I don't think.
I have to think about that for October, whether. It's a separate category. Because it's like this. Don said, it's kind of hard to, everyone defines it differently.
Absolutely.
But it certainly is part of an arm of transportation housing, in my view.
Uh I mean, for some people, it's about, we need fewer people here, full stop.
Well, we do, we do, I'm sorry, this island was never designed for this many people. And at some point, we, it's going to have to stop. And they stop because we can't sue her anymore, it may stop because the environment is so ruined that we we just. Not a lot of people here.
So to finish my thought, um that. There is an end game and I think th- there is a enough. There needs to be some understanding of. What's wh- what's enough and what do we sacrifice? What are we asking people to sacrifice? Mostly financially, right? Development, potential, income, business growth. What, you know, that's real, right? What are we giving up to achieve it? And I think we haven't had an honest conversation in the community and people say to me all the time, we have too much development. And I say all the time, are you willing to vote away your development rights in the interest of that? And often the answer is no.
No.
And the same with cars, I want my neighbor to give up their car, but I don't want to give up my car. And so as a community starting to have conversations about what do we lose? If the train of growth and development is slowed or stopped. It it's a conversation we need to have that we're afraid to have and I think it's why we're getting a lot of. Attempts to curb. Swimming pools, short-term rentals. It is, it is, it is people who are frustrated. With our lack of a plan for what the future looks like, trying to chip away at the edges of development. Let's just have that conversation as a community, I think it's probably the most important thing we need to do. And people need to say. I I want people to say, I'm willing to cut my ground cover, whatever it is, like I say to people, you willing to cut your ground cover by fifteen percent across the board? Let's all, let's all do it, everybody who owns property gives up fifteen percent of their ground cover. What 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 would that do? Let's throw out some crazy big ideas and and say. We know we're gonna arrive, if we haven't already, some people think we've arrived there already, other people don't, right? Uh uh. Full stop, what does Nantucket look like when we're done developing it? So we don't look like Manhattan. And. What are the sacrifices we need to make? To arrive at some agreed upon. And. And it's called, you know, whatever it is, capa- uh carrying capacity is the phrase that gets tossed around a lot.
I agree.
Well, that won't be a hard thing to do at all. In the context of, you know, whatever you can, you can see it's true as well.
Yes.
Um when we're having discussions, however, they kind of evolve with the other boards, we're gonna have workshops and things. Another thing I think we all need to get on the same page with is data and does everybody agree with it? Because I hear a lot of, well, that's not true and that they didn't base it on this or that, there needs to be like. There needs to be some agreement on, we have X data about how housing.
Yeah.
Here's how where it came from, here's what it is, here how it was gathered. Does anybody have a problem with it? What's your problem with it? And let's determine if the problem is valid or not.
Torture worker groups are great examples.
Yes, perfect example.
Like, there's a lot of anecdotal. Conversation that goes on around here that people somehow turn into one hundred percent fact. And it it, it's not always like that.
Yeah.
The only fact in life is maybe the speed of light. And I'm sorry, but the most data is that. Is always interpreted differently by different people.
Yeah, that's. Liar, yeah, liars and statisticians, something like that.
I've spent, again, I've spent a lot of time my whole career with with data and I learned that too.
Yeah.
But some is better than none, let me put it that way, like the, I I don't want the the perfect to get in the way of the good.
Some is better than other, but it has to be very, I think Libby made the point, where did it come from? How was it generated?
Yes.
What is the standard error, standard deviation around those numbers? Listen, that has to be explained.
Yeah.
Well, we're getting close to the ten thirty, which you know, or for the, did you want to?
Yeah, it's just kind of a random, random thing to throw out as a as a new member. Um yesterday, there were some, some kind of general comments made about the schools and the hospital. Obviously, two major, important, majorly important components of our community. I was gonna ask my fellow board members or town, how, does the. Obviously, there's the school committee and the hospitals, it's completely separate, but. Do do we, does the board and the town, do they ever come to a select board meeting? I feel like that's such a big part of the community and to Mary's point yesterday about, obviously, you know, that's not our purview of hiring. Primary care physicians, of course, right? But just on. Hearing from them and hearing what's going on, I think that 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 those two. Those two major components of the community are part of this. Um may- maybe not from the way that that we operate, but just in the most general sense. So I'm just curious if anybody has any thoughts on kind of just keeping in touch with schools and hospitals and hearing what's up with them and. Um I did see a couple of weeks ago before before I was. Um elected that a couple of parents came to the board and talked about some mental health stuff and I know it's a little different, it wasn't exactly our purview, but. I I I found it, as just as a community member, I found it interesting and heartening that they would come and just make public comment like that. Um maybe there was a better place for it, ma- ma- maybe there was a different conversation, but I I just thought, I thought it was interesting, so.
And they might be two groups that, I mean, if I were gambling person, not that. They might have strategic plans, would it be useful to know about them?
Their their issues is that operating corner of books is this housing.
Yeah.
The hospital board is uh. Struggling, the reason they don't have the staff they wanted. I'm sure they have this, we're having the same conversation right now. It's staffing. And it's costing them a fortune. Because they have to have, you know, essentially a lot of time staff.
It's costing us a fortune too, traveling nurses is one thing, but also projects, like. We have a lot of projects that are just sitting out there, they haven't started yet and now. Hopefully, we're gathering together some more resources to get them done, but. Whatever the appropriation was for them at the beginning, it's double that now. And now we have to go back and get more money. And so there there's a significant cost to this whole staffing.
Yeah, the cost of the delay that's created by not.
Yeah. Um we we.
I know you need to go to the funeral, so. Um well, we'll get back together August second, um so and and do the governance piece, so we'll have something about. Um a a meeting type of scheduled more strategic meetings and then if you would make sure you have your. For your questions on governance, we'll be ready to do that. Government session in August, now, is that what that tells them I do, like, is that something we all want to make to do? Well, I mean, I think from a practical perspective, it's, I mean, you're. Probably not, it's more of a, what are you willing to commit to, here's what the schedule would look like, I think it requires a step back. But August second is only five weeks away, so it's a, it's soon. It's a blink of an eye on a lot of people between now and then, right?
Yeah, we have a short schedule in the summer.
Yeah. Okay, see you then.
Thank you.
Everyone, just so you know, like.
Yes. Do you like?
I think Erica's gonna just turn this off. Erica, if you're still there, can you turn off? Um, we're just letting you know that Chief Pranson just called me and said that there's gonna be a procession of the fire trucks, they're gonna be all. Amassing at, they're gonna be staging at the.